June 20th, 2016, and we will call the school committee meeting to order. Just a quick question as we start, you know, we're looking at the routine payments that we're signing. There is no sign, a signature page on this one. So I'm wondering if it belonged to something else, or there was supposed to be a page.
Is it part of this one, maybe?
Did it lose its...
It's a lot of small transactions, so I couldn't tell. Is it a $34,000 transaction on that? Well, you have no signature page on that one?
Yeah, there is. It's on staple the second tip into this one.
All right. This one doesn't have any. Well, this one has actually on the fourth page.
I missed that. Sorry.
All right, I think we solved the problem.
Like that.
Okay. So, okay, so, um, we have one set of minutes to approve. June 6th, 2016, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion for the minutes of June 6th.
Thank you.
On the second.
On the second, thank you. Any comments or edits to these minutes? And all in favor to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any visitors who would like to speak? Anybody? Okay, all right. So we're gonna move on to new business.
So, A, the MOA, the after-school program with the collaborative. Chris Taggart will be here on July 18th.
Okay.
To present the work of this year and also an MOA before moving forward next year.
And that gives them enough time, I'm assuming, to prepare for next semester and all that?
Yep.
That's good.
So if you could forward me any questions you have, so he can prepare to answer any questions you have?
Okay.
That would be great.
Yeah. And... But I don't suppose that it's gonna be that much different than what we had done for the previous semester, but, you know?
Correct.
And we may also want to talk about how frequently do we want to authorize these after-school programs? I mean, to make it easier on you as well, that, you know, we don't have to do back and forth for each semester. But I guess we're just trying something new. We wanted to see how it works for the community and the students.
Okay. And so the flyer is attached to that. As you know, the flyer went home seeking information from parents and families and interest levels, so that the collaborative can start to plan any of the specialized programs and the curriculum that they would need.
Okay.
Okay.
So it already went out, you said?
It did, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's the one we saw on here, right?
Yes, it's the SOAR.
Was that only for one school?
They're going to register at East Meadow and then transfer, transport over to West Street.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Is that any effect on the Children's First program that we worried about a long time ago? Anybody know about that?
Well, I think that's one of the questions to send our way, so...
Okay. Then we have the contracts, I guess?
Mm-hmm, those are included.
I have one of them. I didn't touch it. I don't have Children's First.
No, that one doesn't require your signature.
Doesn't? So how do we do it?
What one are we looking at? MacArthur Mary?
The West Street School.
Could you remind me why that, a contract doesn't require any approval?
As you know...
Well, what I have in the notes in the agenda is the West Street School Space Ushids Agreement for Children's First.
Okay.
Starts August 30th, 2016, and ends on June 30th, 2017.
Okay.
Did it get uploaded to the...
Yeah, it's here. The drive. Okay. So who signed this contract?
For sure.
So you've authorized me to sign?
We did?
And so this is one that I'm just sharing with you, so you can have your eyes on it before I ink it.
Is there any change in it for a year ago?
Nope, just the dates.
So the contract price is the same and all?
Mm-hmm.
And then, no issues? There'd be no issues that, well, that you would have to deal with?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not outside of...
Not that I'm aware of. Yep.
So, just a little history on this one. Initially, when we've all got the first chance to look at it, we saw some things that didn't really make sense or were not clear enough. You know, based on our own experiences with contracts, we said we need some more clarification on these, or we have to make the language clear for both parties.
Okay.
So long as there is no change, I think we looked at this, both of them, a couple of times. All that we need to know is whether or not there is any change to the amounts, durations, and as Jim asked, if there is anything that, you know, that was, that's provided to us as feedback, you know, related to contracts, that would be helpful. So you're signing that one, do we need to approve it?
No, I would, this was just an FYI.
Okay.
And then the second one is the Immaculate Heart of Mary, which is similar, just an extension.
Okay. Nothing changed? No change, and, okay. Because I think last year went through, yeah, last year went through this one in some detail, I think.
Was there any change to the custodial rates, or...
Let me see if I can find last year's.
Judy, do you know, did we change the custodial rates at all for next year? Neither, I don't think we did.
No, this is a contract for the upcoming year.
Yep. So same as last year.
Any issues with this one that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
That you haven't heard about yet, anyway?
That I've heard about yet. Nothing to solve. So far, so good.
Can you remind me why it ends sometime in April? Because they don't need the facilities after that?
Yeah, they're finished up, calendar year.
Okay. Hi, Deanne. Okay. Is there any other questions about this contract? Jen, do you have any questions? Deanne, did you get a chance to look at the Immaculate Heart of Mary? No, yes.
Yes, I did.
Do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
The only question, it's similar to last year.
Yes, it is.
Okay, everything's the same.
The base, yep.
Okay.
And structurally, we had already discussed this, and we had made updates in a way, so...
Okay.
Okay, so if you could just slide it to the screen. Is there a date or something? Okay. All right, thank you.
Contract, yes.
Then we have that long discussion on surplus.
Okay, next, we have the surplus computer equipment from David, the technology director, requesting your approval and a vote to deem the listed computers and hardware and peripherals as surplus.
Okay. Just a quick question on these. Out of curiosity, how long do these computers last? I mean, just because we get them donated, is there a shorter lifespan, or...
Absolutely. The computers that get donated to the school probably average, you probably get between two and four years of life out of them, whereas a brand-new computer, a lot of schools can push them to six years, sometimes even more. So there is a, so, when you live on donated material, there's two things that happen. You have to hope that you keep getting donations, because, number two, they don't last as long. So you'll see a lot, you'll see a lot of turnover, you're gonna see a lot of turnover. In the high school on that list, the Hewlett-Packard 7800s, were put in here two years ago. Okay? Those are the slowest performing computers we have. Those will be discarded, and we were blessed about a month ago and received, you know, quite a bit of other inventory that will replace those older ones. So everything that's being disposed of is being replaced with newer, faster donations.
No cost to get rid of these? Anywhere, no cost?
The only thing there's a cost for is monitors. Monitors have a cost, CRT monitors have a cost of $5 each, but the computer equipment, there is no cost. As long as you have at least 25 units, the company comes here and takes them for free, and they also destroy the hard drives using an approved method, so that there's no possibility of data recovery by anyone that might intercept them.
Thank you, Dave.
There are also, and, you know, sometimes when you get donated, just to let you know, I mean, when you get donations, if someone donates 100 computers to the school, it's not uncommon out of that batch of 100 to have five, seven, or eight duds that ride off the truck. You know, they just can't be fixed.
Right.
But, you know, more than 90% of the stuff that comes in can be commissioned and put to use for at least two years, and sometimes as much as four.
I'll make a motion to approve this list of equipment to dispose of.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dave. I actually ask because, you know, we keep on having these conversations, so that folks understand, we're getting a lot, but in turn, the lifespan is shorter at times, and we're disposing because of that, too. So thank you for clarifying that.
So, E, under new business, I included and uploaded into the folder, shared folder for you, the revised Granby Junior Senior High School handbook. Not anticipating a vote on that tonight, but just for your information, and we'll bring it up for discussion, I hope, on July, at July's meeting. You'll notice, if you're reading it online, the revisions are in red, and they're directly related to policy changes that have occurred from you.
Okay. Thank you.
F, business office management, just an update for you, the bid, the RFP was placed. The bid opening will be June 27th, and the current contract closes on July 1st. So my recommendation would be for us to consider having a meeting on June 27th to discuss the bids as they come in and to move forward.
So when you say bid opening, disclosing of who, if anybody used to made a bid?
I saw that, since I was at 11 o'clock, it was on that day.
Yes.
I saw that on the paper.
And so that, just, so we can have a discussion that Monday evening?
Okay.
It's getting very...
That's next week.
Yes. So we would have to close that meeting by Thursday.
Have you got many inquiries, do you know, or questions asked?
Not many inquiries, no.
Will everybody be available next Monday?
I'm available. It'd be a short meeting anyway, right?
Yeah, should be.
It may or may not, but it'll probably be good.
Okay.
Six o'clock, 6?
Can we do it 6:30?
6:30 works for me better.
Okay. Thank you. It helps me.
Works for me better, too.
Maybe we should just change it to 6:30, I mean, what do you think?
Well, the reason why we changed, at least temporarily, to 6, because we're doing policy review for one hour before the meetings.
Oh, that's right.
That's why.
That's right.
I mean, I, otherwise, I have no problem making them 6:30, until we resume the policy review, at which time I may need to do 6.
Mm-hmm.
No, actually, what was the 6 o'clock? No, 6 o'clock, probably the third...
Five to 6?
Yeah, the third Monday.
Is that 6:30?
I had a, I had a recurring meeting.
Right.
I think that's what it was. So 8 o'clock every third Monday, and I believe that's the reason why we moved it back to 6, and I don't have that meeting anymore.
But we're not changing it back. We just gotta change it back to 6.
No, we're trying to change everything back to 6:30.
6:30, yeah.
Yeah. So it should be all good. And, you know, we got into the habit of keeping our meetings limited to half an hour, right? So it didn't work, but all... All right, so that's good. 6:30, next?
The agendas are too long.
Next. Yeah. Actually, this is a fairly quick agenda, see? It's going, what time is it? 6:22.
Well, we're in the interim, so let's not get excited. There'll be a lot more later.
I know how this works.
We're gonna celebrate in a success.
I like it.
As it happens.
Yep, agreed. So, we're meeting on the 27th at 6:30.
Okay, sounds good.
Old Business, you had had a discussion and a present, a short presentation for the NIASC report, and it's my recollection that you had requested a further, more in-depth presentation on steps that are being taken, so I just wanted to verify that was the case, so that we could schedule with the high school and the work group that's going to be put together to address the issues that were in the report.
Okay.
Yeah, we were also supposed to get a copy of the report, which I...
The letter.
Yeah, the letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which, I didn't get it, right?
No.
Haven't gotten it yet.
So the thing about these reports is, you know, we had a good conversation last time, there was a good presentation, and it was helpful.
Mm-hmm.
But because we play telephone many times, just whatever is heard here, or not heard here, but heard from, third sources may just change the storyline. I got a call or an email from one of the TV stations asking, you know, why there were warnings, and it was related, you know, they thought it was related to the budget, and I explained to them that there was really no financial information in here, this was related to the learning environment and curriculum and all the other stuff. So it's helpful to be able to explain to our community first, and if anybody else is interested, we can do the same with them, to really explain what's in here and how it impacts us and what we're doing about it. But as a practice, it's a good thing for us to discuss, anyway. Right?
Yeah, and to, and to answer, maybe just for a second, to answer Deanne's question, on the school webpage, we put the NIASC letter.
Oh.
Oh, we did?
To try to be as transparent as possible.
Okay.
So if you go to the Junior Senior High School webpage, you'll see not only the full report, but you'll see the five-page letter as well.
Okay.
What is it?
It's the Granby Junior Senior High School webpage.
What's the link?
Well, if you go to the district webpage, there's our schools.
Yeah.
If you just click our schools, the junior, you can click the Junior Senior High School.
Well, I don't know. What you have...
And then you'll find it.
Oh, it says, it says NIASC letter.
There's no tricks here.
So on that one, may I just make a quick request? Thank you, first of all, John, for posting it. Last time, there was a request from someone, I forgot who it was, that said, when you make policy changes, can you please let us know? I actually checked the webpages when, you know, the individual approached me, and I don't know whether it was already there, I couldn't find it. If you could, if you don't mind, just let us know when it's posted, so that, you know, we can direct other people to those sources as well, that would be great. So we're gonna have a conversation on this?
Yep, I will work with John, I'm not sure that the teachers will be available in July, so it may be a September, uh...
Okay.
...meeting, but if they're available, then certainly.
So, do we need to discuss it as a commute, as a committee prior to that meeting?
Or is there anything we can help with, or we need to get engaged with?
Yeah, I, I feel we at least need to...
And I also presented, this was a student in, I think it was on June 10th, with a letter that kind of outlined steps that have already been taken around some of the bulleted items, you know, that we, that needs to be, that need to be addressed by April 2017 for the special progress report, including work around curriculum, including work around a five-year capital plan that we've developed, things that I think that the commission's going to look for. So we've, we have a nice jumpstart, because we've had a year or so to really start preparing for what we were anticipating around some of the warnings, and, you know, I think the reason why we were put on the warning for standard two, which was curriculum, as well as standard six, which was community resources for learning, is that we anticipated this when we did our self-study. Because before we could go any further with our own ratings guide, we realized that we were lacking, you know, the facility to really, you know, put ourselves in a more desirable place with what, you know, we would be, what we should have been expecting. So, you know, I think that we do have, but again, being here 10 years ago, we're in a very similar situation, and at that time, we had put many of our eggs in a new building, or, you know, in the basket for a new building that never came to fruition. So now, in lieu of a new building, I think we're really hoping for this five-year capital plan to address some of the inadequacies in our building.
But, well, do you think the curriculum issues will be addressed in...
They, they already are, I mean, again, we...
But totally, so that, so that warning part curriculum can be taken off of there, and hopefully they'll say, they'll give its blessing that we're set now.
Yes.
Because we've been working on that for, I mean, since I've been here, curriculum's been an issue, and then we find out that it's not as far as curriculum as we thought we were, so, which I know is a big issue. It doesn't happen overnight, but I hope that's a focus between now and April.
And it has, I mean, again, this past year, we really have spent a lot of time in each of the disciplines around creating common assessments, around, you know, especially in, you know, last year was ELA, this year it was science, and really looking at creating a common template that they're asking for, that has essential questions, that have units to study. It's gonna continue to be a focus of ours next year. I think that we're really heading in the right direction in curriculum. But again, if you, if you look at the curriculum ratings guide, though curriculum seems like it's based on essential questions and units of study, a large part of curriculum has to do with facilities as well, science labs, and everything else, classroom space, and so that was one area where we were really hit, was with our facility as it was related to curriculum.
But we can't, but we can't do anything about that until now in April.
Right.
So that's gonna be status quo.
Exactly, so that's why we, I think we're focusing on more so the template and some of the other areas. I mean, if you remember, Jen, that was about seven or eight, 10 years ago, we created those curriculum articulation plans, that each teacher, K through 12, had these caps that, and so I think eventually mapping it and looking deeper into our curriculum is gonna be a goal of ours here at the school.
Good. So, just two quick notes. One is, I think last meeting Jim made a point that sometimes we focus on things that are not really working that well, but we don't necessarily highlight. So if we have these incremental gains that we're making, to your point, I mean, it's not like nothing is happening, we're not doing anything about any one of these things, but if we can highlight those so that everybody knows, including ourselves, what we're doing and which direction we're going, that would be helpful. The second one, and correct me if I'm wrong on this one, we are making this report, especially the warnings, the letter available for everyone to see, as a sign of our continued transparency. Because as far as I understand, NIASC does not really disclose warranty status. They do disclose, they, they, they make public probation status, which is a severe status, but warning is identifying deficiencies that they would like to work with the school systems with, in order to improve, fix those situations. So, a lot of people ask me, hey, how come I cannot just go to NIASC site and find it? Because they don't make those things public, as far as I understand, because I did the same thing. So we are making it public so that everybody has the same information as we are looking at, just like we've been trying to do with, with almost everything else, you know, unless it's a sensitive executive session, conversation, everything else we tried to make available. So I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that. This is to make sure that we understand what the warnings are, what it means, what we're doing to fix a situation.
And, and that's, that's the reason why I think that we need to talk about it as a committee, because the letters on the website, and I'm guessing it's been there for a little bit now, and yet we haven't linked the letter to the NIASC report and discussed it in, as a full committee, and I think we need to do that.
Before the September meeting?
Before the September meeting.
Sure.
For sure.
We can do that.
Maybe not next meeting, because I'm gonna need a little time to go thoroughly through the report and the letter.
Okay.
So, I don't know, maybe in a couple of meetings?
Yeah, we can do that.
Is that fair for everybody? Does that give everybody enough time?
Yeah. But September, we will still have John, our teachers, to make their presentation.
Yes.
Does it work, John?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, under old business B, ChartWells, it was a lengthy discussion last time, looking for some direction as to whether to continue that conversation, or, I think that the school committee had asked for ChartWells to come more regularly to present. They do have a, a survey that they've done, I'm sure that they will come in, would be willing to come and present that. But I know there's a concern amongst the school committee about...
The deficit.
The deficit.
So, the deficit is gonna be a concern. It came up during the town meeting as well, and obviously, our conversation was around the lack of communication that we had, apparently, you know, to the extent that it was accumulating and we did not know. But it was a good conversation if we're gonna look into the future, because it looks like their forecasting and their budgeting process includes that deficit, which, at least from my perspective, doesn't make any sense. Instead of that, I think we asked them to come back with whatever suggestion they may have for us to eliminate that deficit. If that deficit will just go to the top line as part of the services and this and that, then they're gonna come back to us and say, well, this is what it is, are you willing to pay for it? Makes a lot more sense than saying, here's the budget, but by the way, there will be a deficit at the end of the year. Because it puts us in a bad situation. For instance, this year, that deficit is 19,000 plus, or was, for fiscal year 16. So we should not, we should not allow that, you know, to continue, but we turn it to them, because I think they had some ideas as to how they can find some different ways, some creative ways to potentially reduce, eliminate, whatever it might be, the deficit, then we can have a conversation. But we should, we should continue that conversation.
Okay.
How does that work, by the way? The, we have an annual contract with ChartWells, or do we have a long term that gets renewed annually? What is it?
It's a three-year, they're a three-year, and this is year two.
Okay.
And what happens though, because of the way that National Food Service, GSDA, school lunch program works, is that every year, it has to get approved by Department of Ed and the Nutrition Department. So we send off to the state their renewal, the state goes through and makes sure that it meets all the federal requirements, and then also that any contractual changes meet with their approval.
Okay.
And then they come back and notify the school district that, yes, your contract for your food service management incorporation is approved by the state.
That's, that's why I was getting a little confused, I knew that it was more than a one-year contract, but I know that we're having more frequent conversations, that's probably when there is a requirement to increase the, the cost, or the price, or...
And it goes, I guess, the management or administration, you know, we get from them, you know, this is where, when we had that discussion, yes, I would agree, it was a very good discussion, but, you know, as far as contract management goes, when we're looking at the overall operations, you know, we could have, again, hindsight, saying that, okay, we're coming in, we got... okay, we're coming in, we got the ten thousand dollar contingency, that means, you know, projected nine thousand dollar, you know, shortfall, if you will. Do we raise the prices mid-year? You know, do we look at reducing services? You know, so, understanding that that's a concern that the school committee wants to be involved in, and, you know, I understand why. But, you know, hindsight, and also looking at previous years, we haven't. You know, so-
We haven't looked at it, is that what you're saying?
Well, it hasn't been discussed necessarily.
Because we did not know. I mean, that's, that's-
Well, and we don't need to go down that, you know, but as far as the accumulated deficit, we did know.
We didn't have know.
It was reported every year.
No, it was not.
Okay.
It was not. I mean, just how, if it were, why would I be invited to an auditor meeting to just let me know that there was an accumulated deficit?
Because if you remember, if you look at, and this is why I'm saying it was, was we end up having the school committee vote to reclassify expenses out of the food service program into the local appropriation when there are funds available, because, to address these deficits. And when we had that auditor's meeting, it was shared again that we provided all this documentation to Mr. Martin, and his exact words were at the meeting was, yes, and I didn't have time to go back and recreate those entries. So, it was all done because of the fact that when Dr. Rodriguez was here, there was no formal quote-quote vote per Mr. Martin. So we were to bring these deficits to the school committee, and they would vote to address them. So it was brought forward and shared. The issue is that it was never done on the town side. Regardless of that, we'll be coming forward and bringing you regular updates from ChartWells, with ChartWells here regarding operations.
Yeah. My question last time was, I can see that, you know, we put ten thousand in the budget as a contingency, which means school lunch needs it, they use it. So they used it last year to cover that, basically. But how are we supposed to cover nine thousand extra? Right. My concern would be that, you know, we look at the budget, if things aren't going well, somebody here would freeze accounts or do something. And I'm not saying you stop giving lunches, but what, how did they think this was going to happen, then? We're just going to have an extra nine thousand above that? That's what-
They came, they came and talked with us. And when, what we did is we froze, overall, because of the status of the budget, that was a part of it.
Did they cut any of their people to, to help on that?
They did make, they did make adjustments internally. But, again, going on, we, we were looking at it from the point of view of the service, you know, and anything that they made cuts beyond that could have had an adverse effect on participation. So they cut it down, I would say, to the bare bones.
Now, jumping ahead, I know they're not here, and I can spend this forever, but I look at, we know enrollment's going down. I know the enrollment of people. From what I try to ask about, you know, you know, try to inquire, do you eat lunch, you know, do you not? Staff doesn't eat lunch a lot. And that, how's it going to increase next year? Yet they're showing a projection that's almost ten thousand dollars less. Are they assuming already that we're going to raise these lunch prices? Is that a built-in?
We have to. Yes, that is built in. We have to raise the prices because of the payback.
We asked that question at the last meeting.
I think vaguely we have to.
Yeah.
Right, because right now, that, that was the whole-
I asked that question if, if-
I do remember that, but I was sort of still focused on how we got to this deficit.
And the answer was yes.
Focused on that. I don't know.
So, again, not, the reason why I'm really adamant about this is because folks come to us and say, you're sitting on a hundred and something thousand dollar deficit knowingly, and you did not let the town know. So if we really knew the nineteen thousand plus deficit, the last time we actually had a conversation, a discussion around the budget, the number, I, they're a member, and sometimes, you know, my memory misleads me, but it was around two thousand dollar or so surplus. And we were even talking about potentially having more. If we had a conversation that said, well, you know what, we had two thousand plus, minus nineteen, so we're in seventeen thousand dollar in deficit, that's the conversation we would like to have. If we find out about a deficit at the end of the year, when everything is said and done, it doesn't help us, one. Number two, when things are reclassified, we're not accountants. I don't know, I mean, just somebody says I'm moving things. And that's the main reason why we were asking, to find a better way when we move things from line item to line item. Like, the school committee line was always twenty thousand dollars, or whatever that was. Maybe it was a little less in the past. But whenever you really spent that number, and folks, when, you know, they saw our budget, they always thought that school committee was spending twenty thousand, fifteen thousand, whatever that might be. They were getting reclassified, they were getting moved somewhere else. And to this day, I don't know where they went. The conversation was, they are used for a good purpose, because there was some deficit somewhere else, we need approval on that. If you're referring to that, yes, we did approve that. Our intent is not to approve anything like that until we understand exactly what's happening with those line items from now on. And that includes these school lunches. Because then, we find ourselves in a situation where it becomes news, and it grows as news, and folks think that we actually have full knowledge of the magnitude of the problem. And that's, that's not really helping anyone. I mean, folks are, you know, who are making the claim versus us trying to explain because facts don't match. At least, facts from our own perspectives don't match. And it would be very helpful if we can fix these situations. It's, let me give you an example. I buy a house for a hundred thousand dollars. And then, you know, somebody says, you know what, it's a hundred thousand dollar home. I say, good, we shake hands. And then I receive the bill that says a hundred and ten. They say, well, you know, there was a ten thousand dollar deficit in your budget, just that we added it here, you know, it wasn't in the, it's almost like that. We never really understood that that program was continuously in, in a deficit. So that is the past. I guess what we're trying to understand is how do we fix it from this point on, so that we have ideally no deficit whatsoever? There has to be a way to say, they talked about eight options for food that nobody else in Massachusetts has, or, you know, the price increase, this much increase will cover that much on the cost side. We should talk about all those, so that we find out what options are available to us, to be able to eliminate the deficit. I mean, nineteen thousand dollars this year was, you know, I gave the same example last time, it was the music program. It's not really a small change. At least not anymore, so. Anyway, thank you. So what are we going to do then? Just, we're going to invite them for an upcoming meeting to see what they were able to?
They apparently, and also met with Jonathan to talk about potential changes at the high school to cut costs without negatively affecting programs. I have required of them to provide us their monthly financials that we will include in your packets, so that we have that.
Okay, so the actuals will be?
Their attendance will, I would say, I'd ask them to come to the first, you know, they close their books by the tenth of the following month. So, the September results, they'll have by October tenth. So I would say, the next school committee meeting after October tenth, to have them come, so that they can walk you through their summary format that they provide the information. And it shows participation, breakfast participation, lunch participation, meals per labor hour, et cetera, et cetera, walk you through all the necessary documentation to show you. And then again, with projections regarding anything changing from budget to actual, based on one month's activity, two months' activity, come October, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the things that we got regularly where, you know, we made those, I'll say, administrative decisions regarding the program.
As you ask also, and I know this, I got to speak for the other half of our district, and that is the elementary kids. I, my understanding way back when, when the first meeting was that, the first year of doing this was to, we got to stress the high school, we got to get it set. And now, it's been heck's amount of years, and I don't think, and I could be wrong, so forgive me, because I'm not there, but I understand that the elementary, they really done, I use the word nothing, nothing exciting or different for our East Meadow West Street kids, in terms of lunch. Why is the vote is always on the older kid? Because young kids have to eat too. So, I don't know, I just asked that question. So, that was one of the things that I remember clearly, was said way back in two thousand and nine or ten. And I don't think that has happened yet. Maybe to increase a deficit, I don't know, but, you know, really, we got to think there's, there's other kids that are important too, who have lunch every day, and they're just as important as a, you know, a second grader is just as important as a senior.
They probably don't eat as much, but-
But that is all-
Just kidding.
I know, but maybe they don't eat it, eat more, and, you know, I know.
Isn't that all, I mean, this is the confusing thing about school lunches, there is that price side, there is also the, the regulation side of it. You know, sometimes, some odd piece of food constitutes, I don't know, just a vegetable, you know, you had tomato sauce on, I'm just making this up, on pizza, and, you know, that's your fruit. So, so I fail to understand some of those things. But I did not know that there was such dramatic difference between high school and elementary school lunches until Jim mentioned it.
Well, always, it bothers me personally, when I look at, I see the menus in the paper. You look at it, it's this long, and you get to the bottom, East Meadow West Street, dot, dot. So what is this? I thought, I mean, that's, that's me personally looking at. That's my personal kind of issue, but it's like, what?
Well, raising kids, you know, kids are a little pickier at the younger ages. It is harder to please younger kids than it is the high schoolers. I think it's easier to offer a wider variety at a high school level. I agree.
But I'm just going back to what was promised, in terms of ChartWells first came in, and now I'm saying, maybe there's a reason they can't do it. Tell me that. You know, or tell me the participation levels, I don't know. And I do know sometimes I do survey them and ask them to do this or that. And I know younger kids would like pizza every day, of course, you know, but after a while, you get sick of it, and the number's going to go down. But just the fact that, you know, they're part of our system too, they're just as important, especially with, you know, a new improved cafeteria going in, and the new building in a couple of years, that, you know, let's just, let's just start already. And not all of a sudden, oh, we're going to get used to the equipment before, you know, it's going to be a, one excuse after another, and we're not making the improvements for the other kids that are just as important in our district. Including staff, staff who live in those buildings too. And I don't know what the staff participation is. I understand it's not, it's not exactly crazy. Must be all on diets.
And maybe that's part of, yeah, part of the issue, and we need to, and this is for almost everything that we do. Maybe we don't know how to get uncomfortable with our conversations a little bit, in the sense that, you know, if we show that there will be, I don't know, an increased cost, probably that wouldn't fly, and this is the way to address it. Let's just talk about it. I mean, if that's, if it doesn't really, if it doesn't help us, if we don't agree with it, we will have a conversation too. But it can be a very nice, friendly conversation where we know exactly what the facts are and make some decision based on that. I mean, they, they should not, nobody should feel uncomfortable telling us why things are not working the way intended. Maybe they, they really, really had the best intent to make it work a certain way, but it's not working. It could be our environment, it could be our, you know, kitchen capabilities, whatever it might be. Enrollment might be really beyond what they anticipated. We should find out about those things, so we can have the conversations.
So, last under old business is the FY seventeen budget. Thank you to the town meeting for the additional funding. We were able to reinstate several positions, not all of the positions that were originally eliminated or reduced. All but the shared elementary position has been reinstated. And we're working tomorrow, actually, to figure out where the final dust settles, to hopefully bring that last position back.
But the funds that came our way will be sufficient to reinstate that position as well, is that?
That's what we're looking at right now. I don't know, as, as positions are brought back and funding sources are reapplied, we are a little short to bring that teacher back. But with some reductions to tuition in special education, we are hoping, as of tomorrow, to make that shift in the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Was that put in, I know the order we have here, I assume, is , so the business office, is that also on hold too?
That's on hold as well. Yep, those last two.
So the priority was basically was really priority?
Yep. Upcoming business, A, MASC, MAS S, the joint conference, I did not enroll us in. I just wanted to let you know that we're not going anywhere together.
Did we miss the early bird thing?
It just wasn't in the budget, and given the expense of it, and the feelers I had put out, it was, we're, take a, take a break.
Well, we never went there, so, you know-
Plus, if they do decide to go, we'll just, we'd just expect to pay ourselves anyway, I think. I don't know.
It's a three hundred and fifty dollar-
I believe it's a three-day conference.
Conference, yeah.
But even though proportion is a rough stat-
Yes, and that might be one way of looking at it. If someone's willing to go for the day, maybe that's one solution. The benefit of it is that we, you know, we talked about all these power and numbers and all that, issues being discussed with other school districts. We're never part of these conferences to be able to discuss these things with other schools. And also hear firsthand from top authorities on some of these issues, what's going on, what they're doing, or, you know, what's, what may happen in the future. I mean, it includes, uh, anything from chapter seventy to school choice, enrollment, and everything else. So it would be great if we can have one school member, school committee member go. But let's see how we can fund it differently, as opposed to out of the budget.
Well, if somebody wants to send me an email.
We could do a fundraiser for it. Do a car wash or something.
Well, I, I hear there, there are some folks who can sing and-
Yeah, we could do that, we'd do a little panel show.
Play guitar and stuff.
Oh, I, I have a question. When I hear conference, I think of information being provided to me. I don't necessarily think conversations. So that's why I'm not, you know, I'm not over the top about going to it. If it was an actual chance to have conversations with other folks, I would certainly be more excited about it.
There will be break, more shop sessions, you talk out, get a chance to meet and talk with people.
Yeah, usually they beef up lunch here, they sit in with people.
Yes. To be honest, I think the only person who's going to have an opportunity, continuous opportunity to do that will be Jen, when she goes to the collaborative meetings.
Well, maybe she's our representative. I would go to this.
Let's see how we can fund it. I mean, that's-
I vote Jen.
Yeah.
I would, I would definitely go.
Yeah, let's find out what, what the early bird, well, I can go check too, but let's just remind ourselves, when the early bird rate goes away, maybe we can just find a way to fund it by then, so.
Well, it's not till July fifteenth, so the early bird, before July fifteenth, it's, it's three fifty.
Yeah, we combine some things too. And like I said, we combine some things, somebody could make it one day, somebody else go to the other, even though it's not the same rate all the time.
Okay, all right. Maybe we can talk about it the first meeting in July, and then decide what we're doing.
Well, unfortunately, that's July eighteenth on your calendar.
It is? Okay.
Because the Fourth of July is a Monday.
So we'll, we may talk about it-
For those who can, yeah, next week.
Have they already published the format?
You mean the speakers and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have a tentative schedule already.
And what the panel sessions are, yeah.
Yep.
I had a couple of follow-ups. One of them was from the April meeting, we were looking by the June meeting for protocol for the SEL program. Wanted some kind of protocol procedure to be presented to us. Anybody recall that?
Yes, can you remind us what you mean by protocol?
Well, I think we just wanted to know how it was all going to look.
Be administered, okay.
Yes. And how it was going to be administered, and how it was going to be, I guess, how data was going to be.
Did I remember?
And also assuming that those kids are in, in our school, and they're going to be in that program. Because that was the whole idea, right?
Yes, we wanted, we wanted a-
Make sure that they're all set.
And then the other thing was the soft rate status, where we're at there.
So the chart of accounts has been sent to Chris Martin, town manager. He was, I met with Chris on Wednesday, last Wednesday. It's on his to-do list for this week, I think, now that the budget season cycle has been gone through in town meetings. So it is next on his list for us.
And I, I hope that the plan is to get it up and running for the new school year.
Yes, we talked about training for staff, a joint training with the town staff and the school department staff. the school department staff, so that'll be discussed.
Thank you.
Any other updates we're looking for?
Those are the only two I have.
Okay. I have an update for you in your packets, it's not on the agenda. It's the Whitewater update. We have the last testing results, so Judy, it's over. The last testing was successful, we were allowed and actually required to send a letter home to parents and families about the results and it was the last of the series related to the incident. And now we just move forward with regular testing.
And that's the letter that is on our website currently, right?
Yes, and was sent with students home.
Yeah.
Just a question, I know that each school, and we don't approve it, but each school and school councils have done school improvement plans.
Yes.
I know we don't approve them, but I'm curious as to, seeing those, some kind of whatever copy, just to see what those councils did this year and how, what they're planning to do next year.
That's actually on our administrative meeting schedule for July 6, 7 and 8, just the improvement plans.
You know, this was actually a major curveball, it was actually more than a curveball, this was an emergency situation, so thanks again Judy for being in front of it and doing it.
I think John Sullivan, a man worked incredibly hard to bring us into compliance. That's where the, the thanks where it belongs. I just told you what you did.
So the reason why I wanted to mention one more thing, now I'm using, or I have access to this nice, whatever they call them now, the water cooler or dispenser with, you know, no-touch sensor-based water filter. And I know that we had some conversation around that, whether or not it's some possibility. Maybe here it may not happen as quickly, but as a way to encourage, you know, water consumption and making sure that, you know, the bubblers are used differently, we may want to talk about it at the school building committee meetings to see if there's an opportunity to put a few of those. They're not really that much more expensive than the regular ones, by the way.
Yep, John brought it up at a school building committee meeting.
Okay, good.
Not at the...
Our regular meeting.
Yeah, at the design, at the subcommittee.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody have standing reports?
Well, I didn't, did you get any?
I haven't gotten, I was going to mention that, I haven't gotten anything from the collaborative.
Okay, so I'll make sure that they have all your information so you can be part of that. We have the school building committee. It is, it is moving along, progress is being made. The design, and just jump in, I mean, I know that both of you were there. The design is being tweaked from the colors, the walls, the natural lighting versus other types of lighting.
Storage systems for students.
Storage systems, how the, some of the spaces should be used. We talked about computer rooms last time and then the library, I believe. So a lot of progress is being made and I think we are submitting the initial version, or we did submit.
Already been submitted.
Yeah, we did submit the initial phase before we start construction. So everything's in progress and I'm not, I don't need, really need to say too much because I know that the meetings are being filmed, so anyone who's interested can either read the minutes, which are meticulous, or watch the meetings.
Plus, the wild plan is really progressing, that's a big thing. The wild for way out in right field. And hopefully that's, they have a good timeline and I think the hope to start drilling and maybe in the fall and start doing testing and get the approval as they turn the corner, so that's a good thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Honestly, again, to be very frank, you know, in front of the camera, folks who don't know how good that building will look, I don't know if we have all the renditions online or they're made available, but some of the renditions, if you look at them, this is a basic structure, we tried to keep it as frugal as possible, but even then, when you look at the design, look at some of the renderings inside and outside, it's going to be, it's going to be a very appealing school. So hopefully there will be a lot of interest in being part of that school system, the school building. And the spaces that we were talking about, or John was talking about in terms of availability of some infrastructure for technology, for, you know, reading space, for special education space, it's all well planned and it's going according to plan, so that's something that we should share with everyone to see.
And definitely thank you to the staff and to Jen. They have had many opportunities for input into the design and they have taken those opportunities. So for example, the PE teacher has a given input into how the gym should be, you know, used as a learning space, not just a gym, and that everyone has really taken the time, the extra time to give their input into the design, so. And a lot of changes have been made with that input, so the teachers are being listened to and, and so I think, you know, eventually when the move-in happens, they will recognize that their suggestions have been taken.
You shouldn't be too surprised.
No, exactly. But that's been extra time on their part, so thank you to them for participating in that.
Well said.
The policy subcommittee, I think it's fair to say that we're not going to do policy subcommittee meetings until the school year starts, is that what we decided to do?
I'm not sure we didn't decide on that.
You talked about starting in July.
Right.
And if I'm still going to facilitate, what I might suggest, Mr. Chairman, is that you look at section D of the policy manual next, let's get the fiscal policies done so that way TMS can then begin to work on, should we be awarded the contract, be, begin to work on a business office procedural manual that will clearly spell out things like transfers, et cetera. Also, in answer to your earlier question, if you go to the district's website and you hover over the school committee link in the navigation bar, you'll see a link to school committee policies. The A, I and J sections have been done and they are uploaded.
Right, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, so...
Was there discussion, Judy, I don't recall, about how we were communicating those changes out to the community?
I have put out some information via connected on occasion, you know, saying that the school committee has been working on policy, but obviously there's a lot of those kinds of messages that go home, so probably people may not be quite sure, but that's where it lives, is in the school committee area of the website. Like I say, A, I and J, with the three that you got done, those have been uploaded with the changes.
Well, since we're having this conversation and to be safe, the opioid-related policy, the new policy?
Right.
We had it in there, right? We added it in there?
We had some changes, but I think we may, we may have to revisit that.
Okay, because there is a, there is a bulletin that, or letter that came out of MASC.
Right.
There is a requirement, and I think it was as of March, mid-March or something, we had to update our policies. We still have time, but, you know, this was a reminder that we need to have it for the new school year, the opioid-related policy, so maybe we should prioritize that if it's not in a shape that is consistent with what the state says. Okay.
Okay, it wasn't a full template, I don't think, when we looked at that earlier, so I'll go check on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all I have on that one too. And let's just connect with Marie as well to make sure that her schedule allows us to resume our meetings then.
So Mr. Chairman, if I may, so you're going to plan to meet the full school committee at 6:30 on the 18th, is that my understanding?
Yes, yep.
So policy would be at 5:30 instead of 5:00?
If Marie is available, yeah, it will be at 5:30. I think that's all from the standing reports.
Open session, yeah?
Nothing else in open session, okay. So we will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A 3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we have a roll call, please?
Diane Paymer-Cousen, aye.
Jennifer Curran, aye.
Jen Petras, aye.
Anne Maravan, aye.